Good evening. Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, this is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, 6:00 PM, and this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting. We are gonna start our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand up and join us. And I'll ask our city clerk to please take role.
Barbara Beinum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glasbell.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Reed, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, tonight on our agenda, the first two things that we have are proclamations. And so, first I'm gonna read the Culture Fest Celebration proclamation, and then I will read the Constitution Week proclamation. So, hey, are you guys gonna all join me up here? One of you? Fantastic. First, we'll do the Culture Fest Celebration proclamation. Come on up, everyone, let's gather here in front of the logo.
Culture Fest Celebration, September 2023. Whereas, the city of Montrose acknowledges that the original people of the Uncomahdri Valley are of the Ute Indian Tribe of the Unitanuree Reservation and the Southern Ute and the Ute Mountain Ute tribes. We also recognize that people from around the globe now call Montrose home and contribute to creating a more diverse and resilient community. And whereas, Montrose is a community that welcomes and celebrates people of all races, ethnicities, and cultural backgrounds. The city of Montrose cherishes our cultural diversity and believes it enhances the quality of life in our community. And whereas, celebrating cultural diversity not only enhances cultural awareness, but more importantly, fosters belonging by creating safe spaces of inclusion where people feel valued and welcomed. And whereas, Montrose challenges itself to ensure that the human rights and dignity of all residents are protected and commits itself to foster inclusion and acceptance. And whereas, the residents of Montrose are encouraged to grow in their awareness of cultural diversity in order to work together to ensure that all residents feel their voices are heard and are inspired to be civically engaged. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, recognize Culture Fest on September 23rd, 2023, as a significant occasion for our community to learn about, celebrate, and appreciate the diverse cultures present in our community.
Thank you very much. And did you guys wanna say anything on behalf of Culture Fest? Maybe when and where it is, like, an invitation?
Sure. Everyone is invited to join us for the Saturday, September 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Ute Indian Museum in Montrose. We have four Native American tribes who will be there, along with representatives from at least 20 ethnic backgrounds who are here part of our community. And it's really an opportunity just to recognize people who oftentimes go unheard and unrecognized or unseen. So please come, there will be food, dancing, music, all local performances. It should be a great day.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming this evening.
And the next proclamation is for Constitution Week, and I'm joined by Sherri Stollins with Brothers of the American Revolution, or DAR, and she's here to receive the proclamation from the city tonight.
Proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2023. Whereas, September 17th, 2023 marked the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in the city of Montrose, and encourage citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed with this guardian of our liberties.
Thank you so very much. I would, as a representative and a chapter regent of the Uncomahdri Valley Chapter, I want to thank everyone in the city of Montrose for recognizing Constitution Week. It's a very strong document, and we need to abide by all its laws and rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. And here's your copy of the proclamation. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So this is the time set aside if there are members of the public here who wish to make a comment, and it's not about something that's coming up on our agenda, but it's something unrelated to the agenda but related to the business. Is anyone here to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm not gonna read the rest of the language. We're gonna keep moving. And that will take us to item eight, which is our consent agenda tonight. There are three items on our consent agenda. There's council consideration of the amendments of the September 5th, 2023 special city council meeting and September 5th regular city council meeting. The second item is consideration of the rescheduling of the November 21st regular city council meeting to Tuesday, November 14th, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. So same time, same place, just a week earlier because of the Thanksgiving holiday. And third, city council consideration of the cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for December 19th, 2023. And that's due to holiday schedule. So three items, and I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second, so please use your laptop to vote electronically. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda tonight, item nine, is Resolution 2023-17, City Council Consideration of Resolution entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Colorado Department of Transportation and adopting the Associated U.S. Highways 50 and 550 North Montrose County Access Control Plan. And I'll turn this over to City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great. So, no changes since what we talked about at the work session, but I'll run through it real quick for anybody just joining. Access Control Plans are a document that we work in partnership with CDOT ON. CDOT, as a reminder, has control over the highways through town, which are State Highway 90, all of Townsend Avenue, which is Highway 50 and 550, depending on where you're at, and then Main Street out from the San Juan bypass going east. San Juan bypass and then goes east from the San Juan bypass is Highway 50. By statute, they're required to control and regulate access points and maintain safety and traffic flow. Work with them on that to make sure that when development, redevelopment occurs, that it's all harmonious, works well together, and is safe, most importantly. We've worked over the years, there's one place for the San Juan bypass, there's one place that's been revised once for South Townsend, whoever are from Niagara southward. Those were back in the place when that area's really developing, and they needed to make sure that they stayed out ahead of the need of that area. We're kind of getting into a similar situation on the north end here. So, we're seeing more development pressures as you work northward out through town. We don't focus a lot on the center of town because a lot of those access points are already fully developed and established. But in this area, we looked at from north, ninth, northward. Turns out that the county and Town of Letha were also interested in doing the same. So, we're joined actually here by CDOT tonight and their consultant, Solfis and Associates. If you have any questions, they can help you. But they were the, kind of, took the charge on all of this, and then we were essentially stakeholders in the process and financial partners. So thanks to CDOT, they did, you know, 99% of the work, so, and their consultants. Made it really easy on us to have these plans in place. Really, it's good for them, good for us, good for business. If you have access that doesn't work, it's, people generally tend to avoid those places. So, we all have interest to make sure it works well. So, through that process, started talking about it, I think, late last year, then went into the open house and outreach elements of it. So held some public open houses and some targeted outreach to the affected donors through mailings and one-on-one meetings. Got through all of that, and that's kind of developed the plan that we went through at work session. No changes since that. The IGA, or the resolution is essentially the vehicle for us to adopt that. And then we enter into a standalone IGA just between the city and CDOT. That'll come in the form of a docu-sign document that'll pass along once that, once all this gets finalized. And then it just becomes part of our planning documents. So those maps and all the studies and all that will be published on the, I usually put them on the planning department's website, if I remember correctly, along with all the others, so people know what to expect, and it becomes a great tool. That being said, they are living documents, so if something does need to change, you know, sometimes just the way development pans out, something needs to be done a little differently, may not make sense anymore if things, if the conditions change. And there is a process for that as well, so it doesn't, you know, by any means lock us in solid forever, kind of thing. With that, we're happy to answer any questions, or if you have any questions for the rest of the team here.
Thank you.
As Mr. Murphy said, council did talk about this item pretty extensively in a work session. So if anyone from the public is watching or listening to this recording, there's great information in tonight's packet, but there's even more information in maps. If you go back to the work session packet and/or the work session recording, if you're really interested, you can hear all of that information there as well. That being said, does council have any additional comments or questions tonight before we vote on it?
I wanna thank our partners for coming. I think we're making this really easy. We don't have any questions for you tonight. We do appreciate the partnership. Thank you for working with us and helping our city grow and to work with CDOT on those access control plans, which is one way of saying how you get in and out of the lots along the road. Yep, good deal. Okay. I will formally accept public comment. Do not see any public comment, so would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-17 entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Colorado Department of Transportation and adopting the Associated U.S. Highways 50 and 550 North Montrose County Access Control Plan as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second, please vote electronically. And that passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. And you guys are welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but it also is not considered rude to leave once your item has passed, so thank you. Next is item 10, Townsend Avenue Missing Link Sidewalk Expense Authorization. This is council consideration of the approval of $70,000 in expenditures for construction of the missing lane sidewalk on the western side of Townsend Avenue between Odell and Ogden Roads. Again, City Engineer Scott Murphy.
May I share just some pictures here? This was also discussed in the last work session, or the same work session. This is kind of overtime work to fill a lot of our missing link sidewalks on Townsend. This is the next one. If you remember, we had a big project of eight years or so ago now on the eastern side of Townsend, that was a large CDOT grant project. And then we, as the area here Ogden developed, we had a missing link between Ogden and Hog Parkway that we already did done last year. This is kind of just March Montana line, this is the next one here. Telford Orchard, this is Odell. So McDonald's is right here, right into the north side there. City Market's a large building on the right side of the screen. This is the missing link between those developments. So like, when Home Depot went in, they improved their frontage, but, and then this subdivision up by Odell, and they improved theirs, but you end up kind of with the gaps in between. For everybody who's kind of used to the area, this is what it looks like from the ground. So fortunately, there is a crosswalk across the bridge already, but there's gaps between on each side of the county existing. This project was initially planned to be done in 2022. Concrete contractors are unicorns these days, hard to get. And we ran out of schedule, and so we, similarly, at the end of this year, now finally getting it in and got it on our schedule to get completed. So, we're working through the final permitting process with CDOT, and construction should be starting soon if approved. The work is $70,000. That's done through our on-call contracts, which are bid each spring, or in the spring, to establishing rates. And then we start with the lowest price that they're available and interested in work, we build them. And if not, just we've got in line, in this case, and this is the lowest price of the contractor for this work. We budgeted $75,000, so it came in final design a little bit under. And happy to answer your questions.
Counsel, any questions? No. Again, we did talk about this at work session, not quite as extensively as the access control plan, but we did talk about it a little bit. Is there any public comment on the sidewalk? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $70,000 in expenditures for the construction of the missing link sidewalk on the western side of Townsend Avenue between Odell and Ogden Road as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second, so please vote. And that passes unanimously, thank you. Next on our agenda, item 11, is Ordinance 2639. This is the second reading. Every ordinance takes two readings. So this is the second one, and if passed, then it would become, an ordinance becomes law. This is an ordinance of the city of Montrose extending the temporary moratorium to prohibit the establishment of any new or relocation of any existing adult gaming arcade uses within the city limits of the city of Montrose, providing that the moratorium shall be in effect for a period which shall terminate at the earliest of the city's adoption of an amendment to Title 11, Chapter 12 Adult Business Regulations, or the expiration of 547 days from date of passage of Ordinance 2594, and providing for legislative findings, intent, and purpose, and providing repealing clauses, and providing an effective date. Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here on a proposal on second reading to extend the citywide moratorium on adult gaming arcade uses that's currently due to expire in three days. This proposal, if adopted, would extend for 18 months, 547 days, until March 21st, 2025, expiring and auto repealing the first minute of March 22nd, 2025. It also adds some additional language that was discussed pretty extensively in a work session held September 5th. We also held a, this was seen at the regular session that same day. There have been no changes between those sessions and what's at bar before you tonight in the packet. It's, for the record, on pages 45 through 49. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions on this one?
No.
I think this is another one we've talked extensively about. Anyone listening who wants to hear more could go back for the work session information. Okay, well, this is a second reading of an ordinance, so that requires a hearing. Pretty empty chamber tonight. Does anyone have any comments? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve, make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2639 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you both, please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next item is item 12, Ordinance 2640 on second reading. Council consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning district designation of Lot 1 of the Parks and Wheeler subdivision from R2 low-density to R3A medium-high-density district. And I will turn this over to Planner William Reese.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Given this is the second reading, and there is no one in the audience tonight, I'll be pretty brief, but in case there are any, is anyone watching the recording? Happy to give a brief presentation. This is the second reading of the rezone of approximately 10.8 acres located on the north side of Ogden Road. Sorry, my slideshow's not working here, there we go. Again, north side of Ogden Road legally described as Lot 1 of the Parks and Wheeler subdivision. The property is currently zoned R2 low-density district, and the applicant is seeking a rezone to the R3A medium-high-density district. The property was originally annexed and zoned in 2001, and of course, since then, there has been significant commercial and residential development that's occurred in the vicinity. According to our rezone criteria laid out in Section 11712 Subsection A, amendments to zoning shall be allowed upon findings as follows. The amendment should not be adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan or conditions in the area. Affected or adjacent areas have changed materially since the, since the area was last zoned, in this case in 2001. The proposed zoning of R3A medium-high-density district is intended to provide for an area suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences and other compatible land uses. This area is shown as residential mixed density low in our comprehensive plan, which provides primarily for single-family homes and some attached residential development like duplexes or townhomes. We do find that the proposed rezone meets a few of our goals and objectives found within our comprehensive plan, including land use goal five, which suggests we should promote higher-density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites. Our housing goals outline specific points such as housing variety and encourage several housing types, tenure, and density, as well as affordability, providing choices for residences of all incomes and ages. Staff does find that the proposal meets the rezone criteria in Section 11712A, and we find that it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan's goals and objectives. It's compatible with surrounding zoning, and the area has materially changed since the property was zoned in 2001. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezone application, and city council voted unanimously for approval on first reading. We are recommending approval of Ordinance 2640 on second reading as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. As you said, this is a second reading. Does council have any questions? Okay, then we will hold a formal hearing. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the hearing and would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance.
Ex stereo, go ahead.
Go for it. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2640 on second reading as presented. Second.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously. And that concludes the action items on tonight's agenda, which means that those are the things on which we vote. So now we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll have our finance director, Shani Wittenberg, present the sales, use, and excise tax report.
Sorry, my mic is very squeaky. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Let me share my screen here once I get it on screen. Why does that? So this presentation is for the sales, use, and excise tax report for July 2023 compared to the same time period in 2022. The general fund sales and use tax is collected at 3%. July compared to July of 2022, the general fund has collected 8.5% more retail sales than 2022. Construction use tax is up 33.7%, use and auto use tax is at 5.4%, total collections up 9.1% with a positive budget variance of 18.5%. Year-to-date for the general fund, retail sales taxes up 8.4% or just over $1 million. Construction use tax is down 67.1% or $474,000. Use and auto use tax is down 1.5% or $13,000 with total collections up 4.2% or just about $610,000. Budget variance year-to-date is a positive 13.5% or we have collected $1.8 million more in sales tax than we originally projected for 2023. Public safety sales and use tax, in January of 2020, we began collecting 0.58% for public safety. July compared to July of 2022, retail sales taxes up 8.2%. Construction use tax up 21.7%. Use and auto use tax up 5.4% with total collections of 8.5%. Positive budget variance here of 15.5%. Year-to-date, sales and use tax collected for the public safety fund is up 8.1% or $205,000. Construction use tax is down 3.4% or $5,000. Use and auto use tax is down 1.5% or $3,000 with total collections up almost 7% or almost $200,000. Budget variance here for the public safety fund is a positive 13.8% or $378,000. The Montrose Recreation District, the city collects 0.3% starting in June of 2014. Almost been 10 years. In July, we collected almost $250,000 for the Montrose Rec District or 8.5% more than we did in July of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected 1.6 million, just about, or up 7% from, through July of 2022, which equates to about $102,000. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds 0.9% and restaurant excise tax adds 0.8% to the total sales tax rate. In July compared to July of 2022, hotel excise tax is up 20%. Restaurant excise tax up 9.2% with total collections up 12.3% or a positive budget variance of almost 33%. Year-to-date collections compared to year-to-date in 2022, hotel excise tax up 22.5% or $20,000. Restaurant excise tax up 10.4% or $36,000 with total collections up 13% or $56,000. Positive budget variance here of 41.5% or $144,000 more has been collected than we budgeted in 2023. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that they gave up to promote retail sales in Montrose. And in July, we collected almost $59,000 or 7.6% more than we did in July of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected almost $370,000 up 7.2% or $25,000 more in 2023 than we collected in 2022. With that, it was mostly a sunshine report, so I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for putting together the information. You're the bearer of good news, but I think the thanks for the good news really goes to all of staff.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
This says, the downtown boundary, where does that go from? From Townsend to how far?
The downtown boundary area report you're talking about is basically the old Downtown Development Authority District. So it goes from the bridge at West Main all the way to San Juan. It kind of cuts in to south, I think Second and Parts, and north it cuts. So it's kind of just this basic downtown.
So good, I'll read out the, the.
San Juan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So thanks to all of the city staff. I think, you know, we're in, we're not in the business of making and selling widgets, but we are in the business of collecting sales tax. It's our primary revenue that we use to run the city. And I think it's indicative that things are going well from a financial perspective. And my hat goes off to every city staff member who's part of the team that makes this happen, so thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Are there any other staff members who have something to report on? Mr. Murphy, second.
Speaking of sunshine report, Miami Road is open, or should be open in the morning, they finished paving today. Originally had a pretty big gap in the paver schedule, and they were able to bump us up. So Miami's underway, Odell is currently being paved. If it doesn't open in the morning, it'll open the following afternoon, most likely. Bridges is being milled and ready to be paved. South will be the next one after that. So all these things that have kind of been in the works are all coming together in quick fashion. So if all goes well, they should be paving that Saturday. So that'll be the last of all the ones, except for that drainage improvement down at Vista San Juan that we had talked about in the spring. Waiting on a concrete, imagine that, waiting on a concrete guy to finish that one before we open it up. We don't have, leave a hole until their schedule opens up. So still on the radar to finish that. But that'll kind of finish out the major Momo. And we are kind of looking.
And we are kind of looking, for the most part, it's going to be committed on a pave date for 6,700 of October, the week of October 10th. So we're going to be closing Miami, with the other end of Miami now open, we're going to be closing Miami and 6,700. A press release will be out here soon or on Thursday to rebuild that intersection, get it ready, so that when the pavers come, it's just seamless and they can pave it all. The only caveat, their side intersection will be reopened, but the main portion of the 6,700 extension between Sun East Side and Miami will remain closed, even though it'll be paved. We still need to do the sidewalks on the side and some of the earthwork tie-ins. And so they'll need room to do that, striping, rockwork, and all of those things. So I'm saying kind of just generally the end of the year for opening of that, which fits well with, you know, when we look to start our next big capital project on the Niagara Hill Crest Roundabout. So so far, it's looking like they're going to hit those dates. And if anything changes, we'll keep everybody updated.
Most of the curb and gutters does have a machine that's just driving down the road, just laying that curb and gutter. And that looks really good.
It's a cool machine.
Looks pretty straight.
Yeah, they got, speaking of machines, so they were running all the machine work on Anderson this week, too. It's a big week. So the pave date is set for that first week in October, which is also great.
That's my next question. Perfect.
I keep forgetting about Anderson Road. Alan Tough, there's just, there's so much in one little space. It's been really slow going, so we're excited. It looks like it now, which is great.
Great. Any other staff updates or questions for council? Seeing none, council. Any council comments?
I have.
Oh, you all have one, so we'll just start here and we'll go down.
Actually, I have two.
Go for it.
I had the privilege of attending two pretty important functions last week. The first one being a press conference held at CMU in Grand Junction, where the CMU promise was announced. And that promise is that CMU will, beginning this next semester, be then offering free tuition and fees to any graduate, high school graduate within the 22-county service area of CMU in western Colorado for families earning less than $65,000 per year. So I think that's great news. And President Marshall intends to travel all 22 counties and stop at every high school within the 22 counties to personally tell the students about what is going to be available for them. And contrary to a couple of comments that I've heard, I want to clarify that neither the City of Montrose nor Montrose County are contributing any funds to this. This is done internally with CMU and the various programs that they have access to. So I think that's a really, really good thing that is being offered to our high school graduates in western Colorado. And we hope that a lot of students will take advantage of that. Second event that I was privileged to attend, and I want to thank Chief Hall and his entire staff for the graduation ceremonies at the, for the Western Colorado Law Enforcement Academy, graduated the second class with 12 cadets and double from the first graduating class. It was an outstanding event. And also particularly want to recognize Sergeant Courtney Jones, who was given a commendation at that for her hard work in running the academy. But kudos to all of the staff that worked very hard to make this a successful academy again this year. And I know Chief Hall is really anticipating further growth. And as I told him, I hate to turn anyone away, but I'd really rather have to turn them away than have empty seats. And I don't think we're going to have to worry about that. So again, congratulations, Chief Hall, on a job well done.
Thanks.
I'm going to tag on to that and mention that tomorrow morning at the forum from 8:00 to 9:00 in, at CMU's Cascade Hall, the Police Department, well, actually, the Western Colorado Law Enforcement Academy will be giving a community presentation for free about the Law Enforcement Academy and highlight one of the most recent graduates who's joined the Montrose Police Force and how that academy is helping our communities here in western Colorado. So that's open to the public Wednesday morning at CMU from 8:00 to 9:00.
And I also had the privilege of going to two events this weekend, but mine were a lot more fun. I went to the Dolphin House Barn Dance, which was a really well-attended event. It was a lot of fun, but it's also a great fundraiser for a really important organization in our valley. Dolphin House's partnership with law enforcement and supporting our kids in really, really tough times is amazing. And I encourage people to look up what they do and get involved and help them out. And the other event was the Peer Kindness, Kind and Dying, which was, it's very much the same thing, where it tears your heartstrings hearing some of these stories. And that they raised over $100,000 at that event. And I think it's very, very much a kudo to the citizens and citizenry of Montrose that we come out and support these critical organizations at these events. Plus, it was a lot of fun, got to dance.
Oh, boy, that must have been cool.
Oh, that was great.
Mr. Glassbell?
I'd just like to comment. I think we had a very nice program last night with lots of motorcycles. There were some there that were even older than me. So I think it went very well, and it was quite interesting.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing me to present the proclamation to the Black Canyon Square Dance Group. It was a lot of fun. And there was a lot of energy. And I had the honor of speaking to a 90-year-old plus partners that have been doing square dancing for over 20 years. And I don't remember the gentleman's name, but I remember the lady because she was really super friendly and really active, Dottie. And I want to thank them and you again for allowing me to do that. It was fun.
Did you dance?
Though I was participating in my great-granddaughter's second birthday, that's the same. But I could tell you I had a lot of cake in it.
Okay. Counsel, any other comments? Okay, seeing no other comments from counsel, that would usually conclude our meeting. But tonight, we have an executive session on our agenda. This is an executive session for conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402 Print 4 Print B, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations under CRS Section 24-6-402 Print 4 Print E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. This is a discussion of Oak Grove Title Issue. So before we have a motion to go into executive session, I think this is probably the appropriate time for anyone not part of executive session to start gathering their belongings and leaving us to do this. Thank you very much for coming to council tonight. And we'll start, we'll have a motion.
I have the forms here, Madam Mayor. I'll pass them down.
Thank you very much. Can you make that motion? It's okay.
As soon as you're ready.
Go for it.
Madam Mayor, I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402 Print 4 Print B, and for the purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations under CRS Section 24-6-402 Print 4 Print E.
We have a motion. Would someone second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Frank and a second by Mayor Proton Reed. Lisa, will you call a vote? Oh, you have it on the screen. Okay, perfect. Please.
Actually, I think we'll need to do a roll call.
What?
I think we'll have to do a roll call vote. Oh, it will pop up on the screens. Okay.
We're voting to go into executive session.
I'm having a little trouble. I pushed the wrong button. I don't know on the same page. Just a little bit. It's been a while.
Roll call? Okay. Barbara Bunham?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well done. Thank you. No one's hanging, Reed. Okay. Thank you.
Did anyone make a motion to go out of executive session for purposes of?